Everybody, we're gonna start the Agenda Review Session for Wednesday, May 4th, 2016. City of New Brunswick 2016 Budget. 600A. Resolution to Read 2016 New Brunswick Municipal Budget by Title. Public Hearing on the Budget. 600B. Approved Members of City of New Brunswick 2016 Budget. C. City of New Brunswick Resolution to Adopt 2016 Budget. D. Resolution to Set Act Level for Board of Education for 2016. New Brunswick City Market 2016 Budget. E. Resolution to Read 2016 City Market Budget by Title. Public Hearing. F. Resolution to Adopt 2016 City Market Budget. We have ordinances on second reading. 605. Bond Ordinance Provided for 2016 General Capital Improvement Program by and in the City of New Brunswick in the County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey appropriating $6,076,975. Therefore, in authorizing of debt in the amount of $5,882 and requiring a down payment of $294,975. 606. Bond Ordinance Provided for Various Improvement to the Water System by and in the City of New Brunswick in the County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey appropriating $2,260,000. Therefore, in authorizing the issuance of $2,260,000 bonds or notes to finance the cost thereof. 607. Bond Ordinance Provided for Various Capital Improvement to the Source System by and in the City of New Brunswick in the County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey appropriating $1,500,000. Therefore, in authorizing the issuance of $1,500,000 bonds or notes to finance the cost thereof. Orders for Discussion on First Reading. We have done it. Resolutions. 601. Approved Agenda Amendment. 602. Approved Payroll. 603. Annihilate Refund from Redeemed Tax Sale Certificate. 604. Approved Request for Solicitation of Funds requested by New Brunswick Athletic Association. Pay for Annual Operating Expenses. Date Saturday, May 7th, May 14th to May 28th, 2016, time 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Location, Corner of Handy Street, Jersey Avenue. 605. Approved Place-to-Place Transfer. Explanation of License Premises. Lickler License. Lickler License Number 121433015006. Name, The Dilger Room LLC Training House of Dilger Room, 338 George Street. 606. Approved PY2016 Conservated...
Conservated.
Action Plan for CBPG Home Funding. CBPG PY26 Allocation, 836-808. Home PY2016 Allocation, 364-873. 607. Approved Amendment and Resolution R021623. Reason to Pay Additional Legal Fees in the amount of $2,004,000 to Midster or Midster. For Police Officer Brad Liddell and the matter of Deloche. First Police Officer Brad Liddell, 35, 32, 75 to 37, 452, 75. 608. Approved Request for Street Closing requested by New Brunswick Police Department. Location, Comptess Street between New Street and Barron Street. National Police League Memorial Service. Date Friday, May 4th, 2016, time 9:30 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. 609. Approved Request for Street Closing requested by Deliverance, Prayer, Revival, and Cabernet. Location, Bethany Street between Somerset Street and Route 27. Church Reunion Celebration. Date Saturday, May 28th, 2016, time is 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Police Extra Duty. 610. Approved Request for Street Closing requested by New Brunswick Recreation Department. Location Johnson Drive at George Street for 16,001 New Brunswick Soapbox Derby. Date Saturday, June 4th, 2016 to Sunday, June 5th, 2016, time 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Police Extra Duty. 611. Approved Request for Use of City Property, Beulah Park between Beulah Park Tennis Courts, 11 courts. Requested by Rutgers University Tennis Team. Location, Beulah Park Tennis Courts. For Open Tennis Tournament sponsored by the Inter-Colegeion Tennis Association and Rutgers University Tennis Team. Dates and Times. Friday, July 15th, 2016, 12:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. Saturday, July 16th, 2016, 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Sunday, July 17th, 2016, 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. 612. Approved Request for Use of City Property requested by Foster and Adopted Family Services Supporting Network in Middlesex County. Location, Beulah Park Pavilion. Picnic to celebrate foster families in Middlesex County. Date Sunday, July 24th, 2016, time 12:30 p.m. to 4:30 p.m. 613. Approved Amendment and Resolution R041607. Reason to Pay Additional Legal Fees in the amount of $11,522.78. Department Law Firm LLC Special Counsel City of New Brunswick for Myback Construction Corporation from $60,174,53 to $71,973,000. 614. Approved Request for Use of City Property requested by RUU Old School Reunion. Location, Beulah Park Pavilion. For College Reunion and Fundraiser. Date Saturday, July 30th, 2016. Rate Date, Saturday, August 6th, 2016. Time is 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. 615. Approved Request from Administrator. 616. Approved Request for Use of City Property and Street Closing requested by New Brunswick Cultural Center. Location, Boyd Park. For Gala Getza, celebrating traditions and people of Oaxaca.
Oaxaca.
Mexico. Date Saturday, July 24th, 2016. Street Closing. Time 12:00 p.m. to 12:30 p.m. Street Closing, Handy Street to Railroad Avenue to New Street to Boyd Park. Time 12:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. Police Extra Duty. 617. Approved Request for Street Closing and Use of City Property requested by New Brunswick Cultural Center. Location, Byington Square Park. Livingston Avenue between New and George Streets. Leave Lane Open for Helwitz Hotel for Hope City Sound Festival. Date, Street Closure, Saturday, August 6th, 2016. August 27th, 2016. And September 17th, 2016. Dates, Park Closure, Saturdays, August 6th, 2016. August 27th, 2016. And September 17th, 2016. Time 12:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. Police Extra Duty. Approved Request for Use of City Property requested by New Brunswick Cultural Center. Fifth Annual Hope City Sound Union and Concert Series. Location, Boyd Park. The date is Saturday, August 13th, 2016. And Sunday, September 18th, 2016. Time is 11:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Police Extra Duty. 619. Approved Request for Street Closing requested by Sinead Patel and Samantha Pa. Location is Livingston Avenue from New Street to George Street. For Barak, a religious ceremony for a wedding at the Helwitz Hotel with possession with a horse. Date is Saturday, September 3rd, 2016. Time is 12:30 p.m. to 2:30 p.m. Police Extra Duty. 620. Pulled as unnecessary at the request of his Administrator. 621. Approved Request for Use of City Property requested by New Brunswick Soccer League. Location, George Gilbert Park. 25th Anniversary Celebration of Hope City Soccer League. The date is Saturday, May 7th, 2016. Time 12:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. Police Extra Duty. 622. Pulled from request of the Administrator. 6203. Approved Amendment and Resolution R011584. Reason to Schedule Payments for Professional Services granted by Municipalities to Deflect Year 2016 for Schedule Payment to City Engineer Pursuant to Municipal Law/Use Law. 624. Approved Amendment Resolution R021685. Change Order Number Two with Dan Swayze and Son Incorporated. For 2015 Traffic Line Threatening. Specification Number 887-15. Amount is $2,039,12. Approval of this change order will not constitute an increase of 20% or more of the original contract. 625. Authorized Purchase by Police Department under State Contract A81348. From Latinian Associates Incorporated, the Three Bullet Crew Festival of the Police Department, not to exceed 226875. 626. Approved Request for Use of City Property requested by New Brunswick Cultural Center. Location, Boyd Park. For Punk Festival. Date Sunday, September 11th, 2016. Time 12:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. Police Extra Duty. 627. Approved Amendment Resolution R081542. Change Order Number Two. Credit with Land Tech Group Incorporated from Royal Stadium Turf Field and Traffic Group. Specification Number 877-14. Credit Amount is $34,707. Approval of this change order will not constitute an increase of 20% or more of the original contract. 628. Approved Amendment Resolution R041677. Reason to Correct Lean Holders Name Authorized Refund from U.S. Bank Cust... Customer... Cust... 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 P.C. 6 LLC Sterling against Block 596.03. Lock 1.06 Qualifiers C1223 against Utilities in the amount of $802.55. 629. Approved Emergency Temporary Appropriations for 2016.
Mr. Egan, should you adopt the budget this evening, then Resolution 29 would then become unnecessary.
Thank you. Appreciate that. 630. Approved Awarded Contract with Garden State Laboratories Incorporated for Laboratory Analysis for the Water till. Terms 12-month period commencing May 21st, 2016, ending May 20, 2017. Specification Number 51216RFP, not to exceed $14,100. Fair and Open. 631. Approved Authorization for Participating with the Borough of Highland Park requested by Division of Recreation for Fireworks Display on Sunday, July 3rd, 2016, not to exceed $4,000. 632. Approved Request for Street Closing requested by New Brunswick Recreation and New Brunswick Tomorrow. Repson Avenue between George Street and Main Street. Bonus Street between Repson Avenue and Troop Avenue will be closed to encourage residents to walk, run, skate, or ride bikes in city streets for Cinco de Villa. Date Saturday, June 25th, 2016. Time is 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Police Extra Duty. 633. Approved Request for Use of City Property requested by Rutgers University. Beulah Park Pavilion. Year-end Celebration for Students at Rutgers on the Autism Spectrum. Date is Tuesday, May 3rd, 2016. Rate Date, Wednesday, May 4th, 2016. Time is 12:00 p.m. to 2:00 p.m. It's not pro dung. 634. Approved Awarded Brokerage Services Agreement, RFP, for Insurance Brokerage Services, Dental Services, Northeast New Benefit Services. 635. Approved Authorization to Advertise. Formationary Bears and Roofing Places in City Hall. Specification Number 903-16. 636. Approved Amendment Resolution R101522. Change Order Number Two with Garden State Highway Products. For 2015 Furnace and Deliverer Regulatory Science. Specification Number 888-15. The amount is $15,000. Approval of this change order will not constitute an increase of 20% or more of the original contract. 637. Approved Relaxation of City Noise Orders. Requested by New Brunswick Construction. Reason to Install Land Reflectors into the Bike Lanes starting at George Street and Huntington Street and Elliot Nielsen Street and Commercial Avenue. The dates, Thursday, May 5th, 2016. Friday, May 6th, 2016. Alternate Date, Monday, May 9th, 2016. Tuesday, May 10th, 2016. Time is 8:00 p.m. to 5:00 a.m. 638. Authorized Tax Management to Transfer Overpayments on Several Taxes and Utility Accounts. 639. Approved Request for Use of City Property requested by Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity Incorporated, Beulah Park Pavilion for Annual Year-end Recreation Event for Friends and Family. The date is Saturday, May 7th, 2016. The Rate Date is Wednesday, May 11th, 2016. The Time is 3:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. 640. Approved Temporary Amendment of Revised General Ordinance Pursuing New Brunswick Parks and Recreation Fees. Title III. Chapter 3.28. Section 3.28120. 641. Resolution to Compute the Reserve for Unsolicited Taxes. Will you read that too? Is that enough, everybody? That's... You sure? Okay. Now I have to break for a moment, please. Start the meeting.
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Escobar.
Here.
Council Vice President Fleming.
Here.
Councilmember Garladi.
Present.
Council President Egan.
Here. Please be advised that notice requirements of the Over-Public Meetings Act have been complied with and satisfied that the annual notice, which gave sufficient notice of the time and place and conduct of all public meetings of the Municipal Councils of the City of New Brunswick, has been filed with the City Clerk, has been placed on appropriate bulletin board in the lobby of City Hall in Russell, New Jersey, and has been transmitted to the official newspaper for the City of New Brunswick, namely the Home News and Tribune. Please stand up for the public.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have a moment's silence for our men and women serving in our armed forces, for all our men and women in the armed forces who lost their lives in conflict and battle. Thank you. We have minutes from March 16th, 2016. Can I get a motion? We'll prove the minutes.
Motion.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Council Vice President Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi.
Aye.
Council President Egan.
Yes. We will now go into the hearing of our... On the New Brunswick Budget, 2016 Budget.
Council President. This is the time fixed for the public hearing on the Municipal Budget and Tax Resolution for 2016. The Budget was approved by the Governing Body on April 6th, 2016. Was advertised as required by law on April 2... April 23rd, 2016, together with notice appearing for this time. Printed copies have been made available to the public during the past week, and the supply is here for anyone desiring a copy.
Anyone who is not secured a copy of the Budget may do so now.
Council President, I have a resolution regarding the reading of the Budget by Title Only.
Can I get a motion?
Motion.
You need a second.
Second.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi.
Aye.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes. The Resolution is adopted. Before opening this hearing, I wish to outline the procedure. Each person desired to be heard will rise and give his or her name and address before speaking. I will recognize one speaker at a time in order of rising as nearly as I can determine. Address all questions in the chair where necessary. They will refer to individual members of the Governing Body or municipal officials. Questions must be confined solely to Municipal Budget before us. School or county matters are not proper subjects of this hearing and cannot be discussed or answered here tonight. I now declare open the public hearing on the 2016 Municipal Budget. Observing no further advocates for the floor, I would like to take a motion to close the hearing. I'm a public hearing, I'm sorry. Anybody who would like to speak? Anybody like to speak on the Budget? On the Budget? Anybody on the Budget? Observing no further advocates on the floor, I would like to take a motion to close the hearing.
Motion.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Council Vice President Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi.
Aye.
Council President Egan.
Yes.
Council President, I have a resolution amending the Municipal Budget for the year 2016.
Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Twenty-two seconds. Roll call.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi.
Aye.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes. Resolution is adopted.
Council President, I will read Section 2 of the Adopting Resolution for the 2016 Budget.
Can I get a motion?
Motion.
I have to read it. Being resolved by the Governing Body of the City of New Brunswick that the budget herein before set forth is hereby adopted and shall constitute an appropriation for the purposes stated and the sums therein set forth as appropriations and authorizations of the amount of: A) $30,947,078.39 for municipal purposes; B) $1,392,391.55 for school purposes in Type 1 school districts; and E) $1,186,854.33 minimal library tax.
Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi.
Aye.
Council President Egan.
Yes. The Resolution is adopted. Thank you. Now move to the City Market. Resolution to Read 2016 City Market Budget by Title. Do you want a motion? Motion?
Motion.
Second. Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Council Vice President Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi.
Aye.
Council President Egan.
Yes. We now have anybody from the public who would like to comment on the City Market 2016 Budget? Anybody from the public like to comment on this City Market Budget? Yes, sir, please stand up, be recognized.
I'm Martin Perramos. I'm the pastor of the First Reform Church in the Friends with the oldest congregation here in town. Um, I would just like to speak in favor of the Budget and not just the Budget. It is increased over against last year, but, um, so have the responsibilities of City Market. And I want to say that City Market is a great organization. It helps greatly to do something against the fragmentation in our community, um, and we should do it.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else on the City Market Budget? Okay, you have to read it, Count Kirk, or read anything?
Just to close the public hearing.
Close the public... Okay, everyone, close the public hearing.
Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi.
Aye.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Need a motion or a resolution after adopting the budget?
Yes. An emotion?
Second.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi.
Aye.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you to everybody who put all the time and effort into the budgets. I know it's a lot of work. Uh, you have to bring back your math skills, I'm sure, that you learned from your other, but, uh, it's a lot of hard work, and I appreciate everybody who puts the time and effort into good jobs. We now have ordinances on a second reading. 605. Bond Ordinance Provided for the 2016 General Capital Improvement Program by and in the City of New Brunswick in the County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey appropriating $6,076,975. Therefore, in authorizing of debt in the amount of $5,882 and requiring a down payment of $294,975. Would anybody from the public like to comment on this particular ordinance? Anybody from the public on this particular ordinance? Seena?
Motion.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Council Vice President Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi.
Aye.
Council President Egan.
Aye, also. 606. Bond Ordinance Provided for Various Improvements to the Water System by and in the City of New Brunswick in the County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey appropriating $2,260,000. Therefore, in authorizing the issuance of $2,260,000 bonds or notes to finance the cost thereof. Would anybody from the public like to comment on this particular ordinance? Anybody from the public on this ordinance? Anybody? Seena?
Motion.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Council Vice President Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi.
Aye.
Council President Egan.
Yes. 607. Bond Ordinance Provided for Various Capital Improvements to the Source System by and in the City of New Brunswick in the County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey appropriating $1,500,000. Therefore, in authorizing the issuance of $1,500,000 bonds or notes to finance the cost thereof. Would anybody from the public like to comment on this particular ordinance? Anybody from the public on this particular ordinance? Seena?
Motion.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Council Vice President Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi.
Aye.
Council President Egan.
We have resolutions. 601 to 641. Calling 615 and calling, uh... 620. And calling 622.
29 as well, Mr. Council President.
29 is all the improvement we're...
It mightn't affect the way it was adopted.
29 as well.
29.
Guys, thank you. Would anybody from the public like to comment on any of these particular resolutions? On the resolutions only, please step right up. Anybody on the resolutions? Anybody on the resolutions? Yes, ma'am.
But there's two resolutions, you say, or anyone?
Any resolution.
Hello, my name is Teresa Vivar. I'm the Secretary of the Reference and Task American Union in the past street in Brunswick. I just got to the... Because, um, Resolution 051621. It's going to be on Saturday, May 7th, 2016. Um, we encounter what before the company members that called announcing that there is a conflict on the event that Mr. Solano and the other businesses are organizing because they celebrated as well Cinco de Mayo. I want to pass some of the posters and flyers that he's posting on Facebook and other places. And in the resolution, it says that it's an event for the anniversary of the leaf, but instead, he's using, um, words, inappropriate words, against the organizers of, from the library and from the New Brunswick Cultural Center as well as last and other organizations who are participating, creating this, they, in May 7th event that was already approved by the City Council on April. So, and some of the, of the flyers that I posted, I gave them to you in April 15th. You already knew that we have this event. So, right now, people in the community are getting invited, inviting people that is going to participate as performers in this library event to cancel there and to come to his event. So, he's creating a misunderstanding about the Cinco de Mayo, what it's about, and, and so, I'm asking the City Council to not approve the solution, asking to move his event to a next day if possible, since we already has been planning this event for long, since last year the New Brunswick Public Library approached to us to help them to organize this Cinco de Mayo celebration in their wish to outreach to the Mexican community. And we prepared many Mexican materials, I mean, Spanish materials on what the Cinco de Mayo celebration is about. So, just bring some of the vendors as well who are going to be, because our event is going to be in Boyd Park. We're trying to move the community and visit the Boyd Park.[1522.94] For them, eh, is more close by Joyce Kilmer. So, between the two, the two events, uh, I don't want to be used, I think it's not appropriate to be used to divide the community, instead we should celebrate all of us and celebrate uh, for the different dates and so everybody can participate both, even vendors can have the opportunity to participate in the other event as well. Um, so, I know last year he also came to complain about us misusing funds that from vendors to, for, uh, uh, gain, uh, personal gain purposes and that's why we bring also vendors, uh, to tell, you know, if, if some of you got questions to that, because we don't do that. We use the most of resources we can, including any, any grant that's been to us, either from uh, the Nebraska Central Center or any, any uh, organization to make the events more educational and better for the community. So, um, I'm just asking you, please uh, uh, help us to do this if there's uh, uh, the problem is organization, last somebody called me there's a problem, then we just want to move the other events that we have in the Road Control Center out of New Brunswick. But for this particular day, I'm asking to be respectful eh, 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 in this special event because it's very important for Mexicans and I don't think this, it should be used uh, for certain people to divide and make people believe, because that's what he's saying in the community, that he's paying a lot of money to, to, to the city recreation, to the police department, the fire department, and that he's been saying for years eh, eh, he said everybody in the community. So, people believe that he runs the city, which I don't, I, I want to stop that, I know it's not true and I want people from the community to realize that everybody is welcome to apply for permits, but be respectful for the world of the people.
So, help me to understand this, have you asked the person who wants this event, did you ask him to change the date?
He don't even want to work with us last year. Uh, he was, we were trying, we were in the same table for years. He did the same, what he's doing, the, this bullying is the same thing that he has been doing with organizations in the past, since the Mexican organization has been the organization that used to do these events, he did the same thing to them. And, and now he wants to do the, the, the same thing because he says that he don't like uh, uh, organizations, Mexican organizations to be connected with other organizations, which I think is bad and is not right. We trying to work with him, since uh, San Peters uh, event last year, we can, it's impossible, he doesn't want to, even though now it's no need for him to post bad comments against the other organizations, so invite people to divide, all divide people, instead he just celebrate and, and that's all. But I think he's a person, like, also he doesn't live in New Brunswick, okay? And I think it's, it, it's instead of dividing people, he should just connect with us, I'm thinking the Road Control Library is open for everyone, you know, the Central, the Nebraska Central Center as well, so I think we should just try to work with them.
Councilman Fleming has a question.
Do you think that, um, the community is big enough to sustain like two events? You know, like, um, I look at like last week, we had Rutgers Day on Saturday, you know, you had different events on five different campuses and I think it brought a hundred thousand people into the city. You know, do you, I mean, sometimes you might have some people that may go to this event if it's, you know, sometimes, you know, if you don't have the event on that day, there are some people that's going to go to one and some people's going to go to the other. If there was like cross promotion or something like that, maybe it would bring more people in, instead of, you know what I'm saying, because this was, this was asking us almost like choose one side against another, you know what I'm saying? So, I thought, you know, when, when it was discussed originally, I thought that one was in before the other and stuff like that. It's almost like choosing sides as opposed to just choosing sides. If you could just work together, I mean, you said it's impossible to work together, but do you think that the community as a whole could, could sustain two events on that day?
The only purpose for our organization to be helping the New Brunswick Library and the New Brunswick Control Center is because we want the community to approach all the parks, to, to get more educational materials. We not just celebrate, we're the organization that is just celebrating Cinco de Mayo as any other person. We try to educate the community. And as you're saying, we have a lot of difficulties already with them because the weather conditions is going to be very bad. Also, the people don't want to approach the point part because the transportation issues. And, and, and by this situation, making here to be avoid if downstairs the city administration is, instead seeing that it's already two events or somebody was approved already for one event, instead of giving permission without to call the city, the New Brunswick Control Center or the New Brunswick Library to talk about the issue as somebody else did before. The, the, the secretary in the city administration before used to call us and we try to avoid this conflict because we know how Mr. Solano is. So, we try to avoid this conflict. And, and, and like again, if, did you see those posts? If he's using this event not to put people together, but really to tell people that he's using the city for his own well-being and I think it's not right. But it's up to you, just I said, because I think other people has to say something about it as well. The, 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 the city council has to be respectful, as I said, and it's not taking sides, Mr. Fleming, it's really respecting the application for other people.
Let me just ask, I don't know if legally we can, we can separate the two. I don't know if we have any recourse to say you're mad at them or whatever, but if they went through all the proper channels and have the insurance and did the proper application, we can't deny them because there's like, you know, there's an internal fight, I mean, between two, two groups. Mr. Shammy?
That, that's true, Mr. Egan. Historically, this council has been very liberal in allowing different organizations and groups to use its parks for different types of events. Um, obviously, we've been very careful to make sure that if someone doesn't request an event at the same location, the same date, at the same time, this isn't the case here. This apparently is two different events, two different locations sponsored by two different groups. Um, if we start getting into picking and choosing uh, who we're going to allow, who we're not going to allow for reasons such as I've heard here articulated, I don't think that would be a proper basis for the council to deny such a request.
Thank you, Mr. Shammy.
We don't ask the city council to cancel this event. I ask him to, ask him to move his event to the next day, since we already have the, this is, again, if this is going to cure, we as a person, as a Mexican activist, I don't want to allow to be used, eh, eh, an event like the Cinco de Mayo to divide people, just in, and continue this bribery or make him believe that the city council is corrupted as well as the, as the fire department and the other departments that he says he pays a lot of money to, to make his witnesses. I don't, I don't necessarily, as I said, it's important if you, for you, it's not important to allow a person may believe that or continue making believe to other people like that. It's up to you. In my side, I'm just going to say, the next time that somebody want to come to this city, the city administration to request a type of events, just consider the importance of not using these events, cultural events to divide people, but as you said, respectful, respectfully, he can do it one day, we can do another day, everybody should be happy. Right now, we have a lot of work that has been done last year to make this event within the New Brunswick Control Center, New Brunswick Library, and now you say, you know, it's okay that somebody else is bullying people, that is respectful insulting organizations, it's up to them, we have nothing to do with it. So, it's up to you, but as I said, for next time, please don't do that, because it's very bad for the city reputation to do this type of things and continue making people believe that he's right. The Mexican community, I have members here who says exactly what he says all the time. And it's only with this, it's only with the parks, always like that. So, if you want to allow that, then it's up to you. But for my end, and right now the community members are here, you hear what have been success, then it's up to you, the vendors, to really go for this event on, on Sunday or cancel, because I think it's not right. If you don't think that we have the sort of respect, I want to show you that we deserve the respect source. And if you want to prove this and continue allowing this, it's up to you, but the Mexican community deserve respect, sir.
Thank you. Anybody else have resolutions this evening? Anybody on resolutions? Seena, buddy? Motion for the resolutions?
Motion.
Second. Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes, you know, one, except six twenty-one is in there.
How, Council Vice President Fleming.
State of New Brunswick.
Councilmember Garlotti.
Aye.
Council President Egan.
Yes. We'll now move to the public portion of the meeting. If anybody would like to address the council at this time, please step up to the microphone. You have five minutes, please your name and address. Yes, sir, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Council President, members of the council. My name is Charles Cradaville, I'm from New Brunswick and I'm the editor of the community newspaper, New Brunswick Today. Um, I, I hope and I'm confident that you'll give me some leeway with the five minute rule because the topic I'm going to speak about tonight is of importance to everyone in our city, it's very, very important to me.
We'll see.
So, um, this morning, uh, the citizens of New Brunswick learned that the uh, water at six of the schools in New Brunswick uh, had tested for uh, an unacceptable level of lead. Um, and uh, the highest level was a hundred and eighty-seven parts per billion, uh, which is uh, many times more than is considered acceptable or safe. And that was at McKinley School, which was the uh, school that had the most uh, results that were unacceptable. And uh, I want to say first of all, that I think this is uh, an issue of community concern. I wanted to hear from the council if you have any reaction to the, the news that uh, you know, the faucets in six different schools were distributing water that was uh, less than acceptable.
You want to ask us now?
Yes, please.
Would you like to know, Mr. Cradaville?
What's your reaction to, to the news that there are six schools?
Well, my reaction to the news is that I'm, I'm, first of all, I'm glad that the New Brunswick Board of Education was proactive in issuing and sending a private, private firm to go out and look at the schools and test the water. I know we did it back in two thousand and five or six, I remember, I remember, somebody can help me. But uh, I know that uh, I was very happy to hear that they went out and did the testing. Uh, I'm very happy to hear, uh, obviously you're not happy to hear that we have any lead at all, I mean, but uh, out of a hundred and eighty-eight places, if I'm, somebody correct me, we found fourteen locations where there was lead. Uh, the spots had been closed down wherever they were, a sink or water fountain, wherever they were in particular schools. Uh, they're issuing bottled water now at the, at the, uh, through those, at those board of ed buildings where the problems were and they're going to fix it. And they're going to fix it within the next, as quickly as they can. Hopefully, it'll all be fixed within the next month. I don't really know if that would be the true timeline, but I think that's probably more than fair. Uh, I do know that uh, you know, in light of this, uh, there's talk of uh, you know, doing more checkups and, and checking the schools out, you know, spontaneously. I don't know what the schedule is going to be, that'll be a board of education question, and what they're going to do with that. But uh, I'm happy that we found it and I'm happy that out of fourteen out of one eighty-eight is pretty good numbers, if you're going to take it that way, but uh, we're rectifying the situation. Nobody's damaged, uh, that I've heard or, or has been infected by it or hurt by it that I know of. And I do also know that none of it came from our main water system at Comstock Street where our main water supply comes from. So, uh, that's my take on it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
For the answer. Um, I wanted to ask, speaking of uh, whether or not people have been damaged by this, will the city or uh, anybody step up and pay for children to get blood tests to determine if they've been poisoned?
Uh, I, I, I don't know the answer to that. Mr. Shammy, I mean, is that something that uh, legally or not legally?
I don't know if anyone could legally compel us to do that as a municipal entity. I think Mr. Cradaville is probably referring to offers in other parts of the country where lead has been a problem. But uh, you know, certainly that's not, you know, the, the rule as opposed to the exception.
Well, I'd just like to raise that other cities are doing that because they've found lead in the water at the schools, just like we have. So, I think if it's good enough for Newark, good enough for New Brunswick, we should absolutely do that much at least.
We'll, 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 we'll look into that.
Thank you. I want to ask about the city's history of lead. I know we talked about it a little bit in the past, um, but uh, is there anybody here who could speak to the incident in two thousand and four where uh, the city, you know, did lead testing and found uh, a lot of numbers to be unacceptable, but then got the DEP to let them do a redo uh, in two thousand and four? Is there anybody who could speak to that? Explain why?
So, to go back to two thousand and four, Mr. Lockwood, could you speak?
I can speak to a little of it, just having reviewed some documents that um, in two thousand and four, samples taken, a number of samples taken by our staff uh, were invalidated because they were taken improperly. Um, when some of our people could not gain access to the house, they chose to take the sample at the hose bin, uh, which is not the appropriate way to take a sample. And um, I believe at that time, we uh, got the DEP to invalidate those results and therefore test it again in, twice in two thousand and five, in each case, all those samples came below the action letter. And that story was reported in the two thousand and four Consumer Conference Report.
By us?
By us. Um, and I believe...
You mean we self-reported?
Pretty much. I think we reported, well, we should have reported that, yeah. But I think we're back on a triennial testing cycle because of the two thousand and five testing that we did. And that is the uh, pretty much the sum total of uh, what I know about the two thousand and four matter.
Thank you, Mr. Lockwood.
Thank you. And can you just tell me regarding the two thousand and four matter, was Edward O'Rourke involved in, in that?
Ed would have been the licensed operator in two thousand and four and Sean Maloney would have been the director. Um, I would think the lead testing uh, is the responsibility of the licensed operator.
Thank you.
So, um, you could see why I'm concerned because of course, Mr. O'Rourke has pleaded guilty to public corruption, admitted to falsifying records uh, to cover up problems in the water. So, if he went out on a limb and asked the DEP to do a redo when there was high levels of lead in the first round of samples, um, that's cause for concern for me. Is this something that the city is concerned about as the city looked into whether or not uh, Mr. O'Rourke uh, covered up lead in the water in two thousand and four?
Mr. Lockwood, I mean, I'm...
I'm not, I'm not sure why you, you, you jumped to that conclusion. Um, as I understand, if the lead samples are taken, they're in a bottle and they are sent to a laboratory uh, directly. Um, uh, clearly, someone made the decision to sample inappropriately by taking samples from a hose bin. But from what I can tell, um, the DEP uh, immediately stepped in, um, caused the two thousand and four samples to be invalidated and required that we test again uh, twice in two thousand and five. I'm not sure...
I just want to, Mr. Lockwood, when we do that again in two thousand and five, now that they gave us a set, or somebody from the DEP around when we take the samples? Just, just for my own...
I, I don't know the answer to that. They, they certainly required us to...
Is that would shed light on Mr. Cradaville's, you know, you know, situation, the fact that they were, I'm sorry, to say it was monitored by a DEP person the, the second time we gave the samples?
I can't, I don't know. I don't have the answer to that question. Um, again, they, they required us to test twice, they required us to issue a public statement. Um, they um, were satisfied with the, as I can, as I read it, with the two thousand and five round of sampling such that we got on a triennial schedule again. Um, again, my understanding of the sampling is it's done by the homeowner, it's taken as the first draw in the morning from your kitchen sink, uh, it is put in a bottle and sent off to the lab. There is no, as, as far as I know, any um, interference on, on our part, um, that would be cause for concern. I understand the recent uh, history here, but I, I don't have any, um, I, I haven't seen anything in the file which suggests that the, other than the poor sampling procedure than anything else inappropriate happened.
Thank you, thank you. Yeah, Mr. Cradaville, you want to?
Yes, thank you. Uh, so, uh, fast forward to uh, an incident we talked about at the, the two meetings ago, uh, July twenty-seventh, two thousand and seven, the city was uh, defended in the lawsuit, uh, a class action lawsuit filed by people who live in a big apartment complex known as Tove Manor, New Brunswick. And uh, I just wanted to, uh, I, 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 you know, obtained the entire case file and I read through it and I found an incident that Mr. O'Rourke was involved in. And of course, one of the issues at, at stake here in this case was that the plaintiffs were saying that, that the water was bad in their place, uh, in their apartments and that it tested uh, many cases off the charts, very high numbers for lead. So, what happened was, you know, and, and this is something that many people might not know, but you, uh, to get a good sample uh, of lead, they do what's called a first draw sample, so you're supposed to actually let the pipes...
To Mr. O'Rourke.
Right, so, so, um, you're supposed to let the, you know, not, not run the water for several hours before you do the test. It says here, uh, the plaintiffs alleged that, um, you know, despite having been instructed not to use the water um, to the best of their ability, the defendants either allowed or instructed uh, representatives of the city to open a fire hydrant at Tove Manor uh, and flush the water mains prior to the arrival of the attorneys and the people that would be doing the testing. And that was uh, an allegation that's documented in many places in this case and, you know, one of the other lawyers writes here that, that indeed uh, letters were drafted to Judge Hoppus and Bill Hamilton regarding the actions of water department employee Ed O'Rourke at the July twenty-seventh testing day. So, it stands to reason that Ed O'Rourke was the one who uh, allegedly sabotaged the water test. So, I know I brought this up and Mr. Hamilton didn't have any recollection of it a couple meetings ago, but has anybody had the chance to look into this and see whether Mr. O'Rourke sabotaged a lead test for this lawsuit in July of two thousand and seven?
Anybody from the attorney office? No, no.
I, I would like to just make a point. I recall vaguely um, this incident where um, at least one of the apartment dwellers out there was complaining of brown water. And we went out and inspected the uh, house and found brown water in their tub. If there was any flushing of the hydrant, this is my recollection, it would have been to see if the city water system was the source of the brown water in this person's unit. I believe, without having looked at the document or even the legal documents that are in Mr. Cradaville's hands, that um, the problem was an internal problem within the complex. There were hundreds of units there. Um, I recall just being asked to go into one unit and clearly it was brown water. I thought the resolution to the matter was that there was a bad pipe within the campus of Tove Manor. And if there was any flushing, uh, and again, this is my recollection, if there was any flushing, it was to um, disprove the thought that the brown water was flowing from the treatment plant into that tunnel.
It's just like the incident with the schools here, they're all significant to the building, it's not coming from our supply, it's within the complex, just like you believe is at Tove Manor. Yes, sir. Mr. O'Rourke.
I'd like to point out, yes. The hydrant was flushed, it would not affect the first draw, because the water's already in the pipe at the faucet. So, if you're flushing the hydrant to a, a main, it's not going to affect the water, it's already in the sink that they're going to do the first draw.
Mr. Cradaville, these situations of lead come from the actual building, they're not coming from the source, they're not coming, just like what we spoke about before with the schools. They're individual to the school and to the building, for whatever reason, built at certain times or whatever, and uh, not coming from our water system. So, could you finish up, please? Your time is now.
Thank you, I will, and I just, you know, my, my, my point here is that uh, you know, Mr. O'Rourke's actions should be looked at with scrutiny now and we should, and, you know, my, my concern is with the confidence, consumer confidence in the tap water in New Brunswick, we should have nothing but full transparency and the total integrity of the testing so that everyone's confident in the water.
That's what we have, and Mr. O'Rourke is being punished by law. He's found guilty.
Indeed.
We agree with you.
Yeah.
We're doing it. Thank you, Mr. Cradaville.
I, I, forgive me, I, I did want to also ask, there's uh, uh, another employee who's uh, been fired or suspended for uh, something to do with falsification of records and that's more recent, that would be in...
That sounds like a personnel issue, Mr. Cradaville. Obviously, as you know, that we don't comment on personnel issues here.
So, you, so you won't confirm whether or not uh, that, that's the case, whether someone else has been fired or suspended for falsifying records, endangering the public? Was, was there not a hearing officer who, who made a ruling on this?
We don't comment on personnel matters, you should counsel the president.
Yeah, we're not going to comment on the personnel matters.
I mean, just to be totally accurate, you do sometimes comment on personnel matters. Alexei Wallace was demoted and a press release was issued saying that it was for abusing a racial slur. And he was the, the person in charge of the, the water utility. And uh, you know, this person uh, has been, been, you know, I guess fired or suspended, says that the, there was a failure, it created the risk of serious injury to the public, um, that uh, that the enormous and diverse population of the city was clearly put at risk by the water treatment operator. Uh, is this, are, why, why is it this being disclosed to the public if, if the public was put in danger by another water utility employee?
But if he's reading from privileged documentation, I'd certainly like to know how you, how he got it, if he's got personnel records. But, like I said, you can't comment on personnel matters. Thank you.
I believe that Mr. Shammy knows about this, right? He, he was involved in the proceedings.
A lot of personnel matters, but that doesn't mean we could talk about them.
So if the public's put in danger, you won't talk about it? Even if, even if, even if the personal matter might just be to the point where the public has been endangered and a former judge has found-
See, I let you talk longer than you should, and now I'll read ready. So listen, he said he's not going to comment on the personnel matters, you know more about the person, you know more about it, so why do you want, what do you want to know?
I want to know why the public wasn't told, if that's what, if that's really what happened. Why hasn't the public been told? What I'm saying is the integrity, and we can't trust our leaders if they don't tell us.
Who keeps yelling out in the back like that with the "yeah" and everything? This isn't, this isn't gospel choir here, so stop with your comments, please. Thank you.
If there were a threat to the integrity of the water system, certainly city officials would do something about it. There's no threat to the integrity of any water treatment or processing systems as a result of what Mr.-
The determination from the city attorney, there was no threat to the public, so that's why none of it is, is being released, sir.
Is that what the hearing officer found?
We're not going to discuss what the hearing officer found, because that's a personnel matter.
Thank you, Mr. Cradible.
This is disgraceful. The last, the last thing, I know there's a member of the Board of Education, can you please ask Mr. Spencer to speak on this? No Board of Education member has made any public comments since the test results were released.
Yes, Mr. Cradible, your time's up. Thank you very much.
Please, Mr. Spencer, I hope you rise, and I hope you come to the mic, and I hope you explain what the district is doing.
I hope, I, I hope you sit down. We all have hopes, so we, sit down, please, sir. Thank you.
Please.
Thank you.
Please, this is important, sir.
Charlie, it's not important. It's important to have Mr. Spencer just get up and say, you can talk to him after the meeting, he'll be glad to talk to you.
It's not important that children-
I didn't say, I didn't say that. I said it's not important that we need to have Mr. Spencer get up and talk to you. That's what I said. Thank you very much.
I hope Mr. Spencer does the right thing and speaks to the public, and here tonight the public that's watching at home. I hope people keep reading New Brunswick Today, because we're the only people who tell the truth here. And this meeting-
Really? I, I said you're done talking, why do you keep talking? Why do you keep talking? This isn't New Brunswick Today, this is the New Brunswick City Council meeting. You can go do more than talking at New Brunswick Today. Thank you, sir.
Check now, keep reading.
Okay. Check your spelling next time. Yes, ma'am?
Hi, yes, Danielle Moore. For first, I would like to start off by thanking the New Brunswick Fire Department, where you're keeping your work, you're doing a wonderful job, as you said, with cutting the wires, making it safe in the neighborhood. So I would like to say thank you, keep up the good work. But wow, normally I'm here on safety, but you won't believe, I'm here for water too today. First thing I would like to start off, I don't know with the water department or the fire department, first thing I would get to, please, can you tell me what, what the gray fire hydrants mean? Are they out of service?
Somebody from the fire department here, the director wants-
Mark, I'm sorry. Mark Bird Robert.
Okay. Anybody want to comment on the gray fire hydrant?
Gray fire hydrant signifies raw water. It's not water coming from our system, it's raw water. Thank you.
Okay, okay. And now, I'm here also with my concern with the schools with the water. That was maybe about four months ago, I made a comment about, wow, why can't the city flush the, the hydrants during a certain time? I said, wow, are you guys too cheap to do it though? And then that's when you said, no, you're not too cheap to do it. That was how you said that the, the water department was going to flush in, in any business area, any school area, you said that you were going to flush their pipes at, during the evening. That was last Tuesday, where, wow, when they were, they were flushing the pipes over towards Red Shaw School, during the, while the kids was in school, water brown, I mean, they was flushing them, I can't, I was told that I can't use the fireman's name, but you would love to check it out, that's where they was at the church on the corner of Lee Lee and Comstock, where they go there, believe me, they were the witness how when the city, the water department, was flushing the fire hydrants when the, the kids were in school. So yes, that's a concern of, of having dirty, dirty water. And then another concern, that was this morning, where my mom told, told me to call and see, investigate. Wow, that was over towards Courten and Delafield Street, where they're not flushing any water hydrants over there. Wow, how the people in the neighborhood said, wow, how the water was dirty, dirty. I, I called down to the water department, and we told me that something was going on o, o, over towards twenty twenty-seven, but I still don't see how, like I said, what's going on with this dirty water. Something has to be done. What, even if you have something going on in, in emergency, what I feel you can notify the residents in the area what's going on, but wow, do you know what I was told? Oh, run your water for over thirty minutes, then, then if it doesn't clear. Why, why should people keep having to run their water thirty minutes wondering what's going on? I feel the water department in the city should come up with a better plan, like, like how they used to do, where you said they never did, but believe me, when I was on Joyce Cup, how they would flush the pipes at nighttime when people were at rest, but like I said, the city is too cheap to do it anymore. So can, can you please tell me a better plan with, with, with the water being so dirty? Just like Mr. Charlie said, something to be done.
Director?
Please, the council. This is certainly a conundrum of a problem that every community that flushes their fire hydrants has to deal with. And we need to understand that the reason that we're flushing the hydrants is twofold. One is to increase the water quality, after about six months, to gain maximum velocity going through the pipes, which will dislodge iron, which is built up on the inside of the pipes. It's not a matter of, you know, money and timing in which we do it, but we do have concerns about wanting to do it during the day so that we can get the most, you know, get the hydrants the cleanest. From years of experience of flushing hydrants at night, you just really never know if the hydrant has cleared up all the way. So, so the idea is when you open a hydrant, is to open it and get the water until it's, until it's crystal clear. In that process, though, if people are using water, they, they will experience dirty water, and it's, and it's a universal thing in, in every community that I've ever worked in. But with the understanding that we are trying to provide, you know, fresh, clean water, we, we do it every six months. Granted, notification wise, we, we could probably do some work, we, we try and get it out in the newspaper, you know, two weeks in advance. I, I certainly understand this is twenty sixteen, and not everybody's reading the newspaper like they used to. And so we're exploring different methods of, you know, putting notifications out there, whether it's on Facebook, or it's on, you know, it's on our website.
Can we at least notify, we're going to your school, can we notify the school better when you flush the hydrants?
We'll, we'll certainly look into that. We're, we're certainly looking to modify certainly the notification, how it goes for the schools and for the businesses as well.
Thank you very much, sir.
Well, okay, why, why can't you just really, like you, like you said before, how, any, any restaurant where you're cooking, any school where you said that you would do those in the evening when people do not really have certain business, and mainly when the children are not in school? That was the plan the last time we talked about this.
Director?
Yes?
Does that have anything to do with the incidents with the schools and the lead, that they might have been doing some extra things during the day?
I don't think so. No, no, the testing in the schools were, we, we just started the flushing program last week, so.
We'll look into it.
Okay, thank you. And then, getting back to Lee and, Lee and Lawrence Street, I would like to thank the New Brunswick Police Department due to I see, at, at, when I got the word that you've been having police cars over there stopping, giving out tickets, I would like to thank you for your help, but at this moment, it's really not, not helping. So I'm asking you once again, it may take time for you to do roadwork, but on Lee Avenue, on the corner of Comstock, only on Lee Avenue, if you can make, put the thing, I don't know what to call them, I just call them the orange little sticks, if you can put them there so it's no parking close to the corner, due, due to where that's creating a blind zone. And I would like to let everybody know, what, like I said, three major incidents in, what, a month and a half, so please, I hope you do respond by doing that, no parking, like, like you do at other locations, a certain amount away from the corner, because it's really causing, causing major things, and wow, like I said, pray that nobody else gets hurt there before you do take action.
Thank you.
So, what, 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 are you able to do it? What can you do?
We'll look into it.
Well, that's what you said at the last meeting.
You said at the last meeting, one person was injured, right?
No, no, I told you, that was when I first mentioned to you, two months ago, that was where the young lady, she was, you asked me, what did I say? That was where a young lady was hit by a car. Then two weeks after that, that's where I told you it was a three-car accident, that was when the fire department, the, I, I wasn't able to use his name, because he said you can't use, use their name, it's the law, where he can't come in and witness, due to where, something he was saying, where they're not allowed to come in and testify, but yes, due to where he was the witness. Then the, the third one, that was when I asked you at the last meeting, would you please take action, because you had a, had a young man, where, what, please, you asked me, let me finish. That was with the car where he was going with the motorcycle, and bang, due to where, what, he got stuck over there, like I said, he was in a coma, his head busted, his jaw blown out, like I said-
You're driving a legal dirt bike, right?
I, I don't know whether it's legal or what, my point is, it's a bad area, you, you had three major incidents with somebody getting seriously hurt there. Yes, you keep saying, we'll look into it, but what, this has been over two mo, almost two months now, you haven't done anything.
Okay.
So please, like I said, I know other things take time, but I hope you do respond by, like I said, making sure no parking on the corners, and I thank you if you do, but hopefully, like I said, hope to see something so no one ever gets hurt anymore. So basically, if someone does, I find the city once again is at fault for not taking action.
Thank you very much. Anybody else like to address the council this evening? Yes, sir.
My name is Walter Harris, one fifteen room job at the City of Jersey. I would like to speak to the council, speaking to New Brunswick about the issue of homelessness again. As you know, we've had numerous groups come here and address the situation, there's been, it's an epidemic, I'm sorry, your continuum of care, I'm actually, I was trying to be peaceful with y'all, but I asked that your continuum of care, Ms. O'Donnell, address me personally, because this is an epidemic. We have a pour over from New York, that is the second highest population in New York that is within the city, who have people fleeing, are coming out of jails and prisons, on top, they have chronic homeless that don't need the eligibility for a forty-bed shelter. Now, to be honest with you, the numbers are very, well, the streets know, but a woman died recently, Nani died on the streets, she had a stroke to the livers, which could have been treated, she had a place to shelter from the elements. Another woman was on the list that I created at the last promise, called the senior housing list, where she went there, signed up for the list, she was completely eligible for all these things, and she was on the waiting list. In the interim of that, I even brought her to an emergency shelter at the Reform Church for like one night, just focused on clinical, she went back to the streets, she was being unable to drink, et cetera, et cetera. She's dead. During our, how would you say, the Code Blue Initiative, the nights when there wasn't Code Blue Initiative, it must have been like seventeen below, and mind you, seven days a week now at the train station, prior to it ever being shut down, there was numerous clerics, I brought out the imams from the Muslim, the Islamic Center to come down and feed the homeless, give them clothes, a group of men from Michigan about thirty deep, and served the homeless, so that the, the twenty situation that you was uninformed of, to be straight honest with you, I was seeing what is happening, because like I said, I work with this on a, on a, on a national, state level and local here. So I'm like, I want, I want to speak to your leadership on this issue, and the only leadership, I don't want an intern, I don't want Elijah Promise, I don't want any cafeteria reputation, I want to speak to the continuum of care, Ms. O'Donnell, I'm calling her out, calling whoever wants to talk about this issue, seriously, because no matter what you do with the homeless, we can build permanent housing from now to, to all our grandchildren who are sitting at the city council.
Who's Ms. O'Donnell?
Ms. O'Donnell runs Coming Home, she's the continuum of care for this in Ten Six County. So on that board, there would be the mayor here, the mayor of Perdant Boy, some other choice freeholders, and they make the final decision on how you deal with homeless prevention. So I realize I've just been wasting a lot of time, it's very dear to me, because, and also, I'm sorry, I skipped over the refugee situation, so there's a lot of immigrant communities actually know of that leave out the river. And as I stated last time, the, the captain of the police, he comes down as an evangelist for the homeless, clergy members come in droves every day religiously, and then they wait at a length, because what's happening now, they're being pushed out of the train station to the parking decks, where the parking decks are, as you know, they're protected by cameras, the security, things of that nature, but they're sleeping there catching trespassing and going right to jail, and that's enveloping into jail, prison, shelter, back to chronic homelessness, and that's costing taxpayers thirty to fifty thousand dollars. Now, the woman that came and addressed you, and I believe the planning board president talked to her after, which I predicted he would, oh, can I see your grant, and let's talk, this is the solution to it, it's permanent housing, not exclusion. Nationally, emergency shelters are being created with an end game to put them in permanent housing. So there's no emergency shelter in that, during the, that's still, during the Code Blue Initiative, during the wintertime, that just allows people to stay alive and pass the elements. And even then, I walked into the, the Code Blue Initiative, kicked in the door literally, and staff were trying to take food out of my hand, I was there for the homeless, and I broke every rule and went right into there and gave food, and documented all over, today, Facebook, pictures, and name. So now, three different organizations have been formed, I'm forming a nonprofit, and this is a very serious situation, because if you don't address it, the only way to address it is to create, like when we worked in Trenton, we had a day center for the homeless, but it was coupled by, they had a place to sleep, like the Rescue Mission. People familiar with the Rescue Mission? Rescue Mission in Trenton, where they come in at seven, night to seven in the morning, they're there, and then you have a day center. And mind you, I was hand-trained by Lizanne, Lizanne's business had a lot of hands-on work with the homeless community, and built up a lot of promise to where it is today. So to carry on that tradition, I'm asking that I speak with the leadership, and we would just offer that, I'd like to coordinate what you already have. You already have the, the fish hospitality aspect, where it takes women and families and folks in throughout churches. I'd like to expand that initiative to a year-round initiative, where we call this city, anything I have programmed, I have, I have, how would you say, I have credible staff, I have plenty of volunteers, I'm just seeking to kind of really put this on the table, because like, you can, you can rebuttal with the point in time count, with the point in time count, states that estimate it numbers, and they're not counting, they're counting emergency shelter people as housed individuals, but then when they leave from the evening, they're back to being constantly homeless, then they're not counting the undocumented, you know? So there's a lot of things that we'd like to talk about, and in short, I just want to address the leadership, and how important, because I have a solution for it, and if not, how to add on twenty sixteen program.
She had a brachial up there, she could get you, you could, speak to her after the meeting, or she was helping set a meeting up with some people that would be going in there.
Well, I guess, as I stated, I've worked with you guys since two thousand and nine. I'm trying to avoid recruits, I'm trying to avoid, you got, you know, I'm trying to avoid anyone you're trying to throw at me besides Ms. O'Donnell, or Bridget Kennedy, that's who I need to speak to. I don't want an intern to come represent them, I'd like to speak to them personally. And if you want, I can even put Julie Klein on the phone so she can confer something, to nationalize homelessness.
I just want to add that, they are from the county, you know that, right?
Who?
Kennedy, Bridget Kennedy and Mrs. O'Donnell.
Yeah, they're county members, but like I said, I've, I've been trying to work around you, and like, I mean, I, I have the church support, I have the community support, I have churches, temples, and the Ruckus community, because it's the first time they've been influenced besides to drop canned foods off at a soup kitchen, as Ruckus Against Homelessness. So now, and they even got a, they had a benefit concert, cancer that was going to raise funds for that. So it's, in this, in, in essence, overall, it's going to take housing authority, the service providers, and some grassroots initiative together to focus on this issue, and there's a plan, we're not just coming at this dry, looking at it, I can go get everybody notes on the street, and reduce those numbers dramatically, fact, because I was there. No, thank you, thank you, sir. Yeah, but I don't want to waste my time.
My friend, she might be able to, to try to see, I don't even know, if you know, if you know, there you go, so they might be able to facilitate something if that's the case.
All right.
If it's possible.
All right, appreciate it.
Anybody else like to address the council this evening? Yes, sir.
First, I want to start with saying, now, what you made about when somebody made an outburst in the back, and you referred that to the San Antonio Gospel Choir, that's disrespectful. That's disrespectful to Black people. It's disrespect for the black people. I'm not just going to tell you it's disrespectful, I'll explain to you why it's disrespectful. It's because gospel music in the early nineteen hundreds, after post-slavery, a lot of times that was all that black people had to get in out of their sufferings and in their condition, out of their condition. So being that they couldn't beat the oppressor, they couldn't, being that they were dominated by the oppressor, all they could rely on was gospel music. So I don't know where that stemmed from, I don't know what made you make that remark, but I think you all, if you don't have to apologize to them, some black people, you won't say nothing that you say is wrong, just because of the wrong.
Mr. Pippin, I'm sorry if you go to those remarks.
Thanks.
All right, next time, I need you to come forth there.
Yeah, if you do make that remark, make sure I'm not here.
I apologize.
Okay. Um, I first want to, you know, uh, start, because there's a lot of talk about water, um, in Brunswick, and just based off of my trip to Flint, Michigan, uh, a month and a half ago, you know, I realized a lot of something, after talking to the people and dealing with the people and, you know, on the first time basis, what they initially tried to do was get us to take up water to a warehouse, but I declined, I said I'm going to give every case of water to a human being, a person. So we gave every, all the cases of water to actual people. And through that, you know, we conversed with people, and, um, they were saying, I'll speak to one young lady, she said she was happy that their water had lead in it, because there were so many other toxins that if the lead didn't enter the water and change the color, they were new about the other toxin that were in it. There were several other toxins, so people were just mentioning lead, we want to know if they're, if they're being tested, if there are tests being conducted on other toxins outside of the lead. Lead is only one toxin, one product. There's species and other types of other things that can enter water, we don't know what type of testing are you doing outside of the lead testing? Because I'm aware that a few days ago in Harlem Park, they did testing on people from the brother to see if they were suffering from lead poisoning. And you know, a family member happened to be one, and then he knew, he said, you know, I went to Harlem Park and got tested because I was, you know, drinking New Brunswick water, and I'm good, but I said, well, that's not, you're not good because, you know, they're only testing lead, you know, people been drinking, uh, Flint water for years, and you're saying nobody's come up sick from it. It might take three years for somebody to come up sick, four years, who knows? Or they may come up with a sickness that's from the water, but you know, they won't connect it to that because you guys are, you guys are neglecting the fact that you have a serious water issue. We don't want this to get out of hand like Flint.
I agree, though. Does anybody know we can test, or director, we can test for something?
I would really like to concur with, with your opinion on that, because there has been such a tremendous emphasis on lead, which is just one of many, many, many contaminants that we test for. And, and quite frankly, there are so many contaminants out there that we test for that are so more serious than what lead is, at such a small level of what goes on. So we are testing for, you know, volatile organic compounds, we are testing for synthetic pesticides, we, we test constantly for total coliform, which would be an indicator of potential human waste or animal waste. That is, that is a test that goes on every week, sixty samples a week, going on and on and on, and, and those samples go on continuously. So lead has really taken the spotlight away. I was at a convention yesterday in, uh, in Washington with people from Detroit, people from Montgomery, Alabama, Cincinnati was there, Boston was there, Nova Scotia was there, um, uh, Flint, uh, Flint, not Flint, um, Lansing, Michigan was there, and the overall conclusion is there is so much going, so much attention going into this, and there are other issues out there that need to be addressed. Uh, we're currently pursuing, um, studies when it comes to cyanobacteria, which up until, uh, last year, when it came to the situation in Flint, was the latest thing that's out there. We have no indication that we have cyanobacteria, but there's been cyanobacteria located in places, you know, throughout the country, so we're trying to be very proactive with that at the same time. So that's a very valid point that, you know, lead gets all the attention, but keep in mind, we are testing constantly for literally hundreds of potential contaminants that are in there.
That's, that's good that you know you're testing for all the, you know, contaminants, that's, that's, that's a start, but that's a, that's a big problem. Now, how can you determine that the water poisoning was only specifically from the structure of the schools that you're saying that had contamination? Because I'm just hearing about this today, you said, there were six schools and...
Go ahead. I, I would certainly like, like to speak to that, because, you know, one of the things that we're always concerned about when it comes to lead is what is the source? What, where, where's the lead coming from? Okay? So we know that the lead is, is not coming from, you know, the Round Valley Reservoir, it's, it's not coming from the mill, and we know it's not coming from the treatment plant, there's, there's, there's no lead in any of these, uh, locations. Lead is actually located, the source is actually in homes and in actual fixtures. So water fountains that are, were very old, we knew that it was always, you know, there was potential for that. Lead is just what, you know, there's lead solder, there's lead pipes, but up until, um, January fourth of 2014, okay, plumbing supply houses were still selling brass that had a certain percentage of lead in it. So, you know, that is, that is things that are out there, that, that is possible contamination. And, and the key thing is, is that first liter that comes out, it's the water that comes out of your faucet, you know, if you haven't used the water all night, sit there for six hours, water's a solvent, it's going to start to dissolve all the metals. So I could only encourage you, and this is on every website, is to, you know, run your water for thirty seconds, run it for a minute, don't take the risk.
Also, careful, um, follow-up on my last meeting. Um, I mentioned Pete Magarella in my last meeting, and you said you were unaware, no one in the council was aware of the action that took place in 1990, you wanted to know if you did some due diligence to date and found out whether he was actually in a police shooting of a teenager or not.
I said I do, I said I do something about it, and, uh, you know, I, I believe his revolver was gunning off, like the story that I know, that his gun went off and the gentleman was shot.
Didn't get that hearing?
What's that?
Didn't get the actors, you didn't... You're saying what you, what did you?
I'm just trying, I'm, I didn't get, that's, that's, that's the story that I got from, on the, uh, on what happened.
Who gave you the story?
I read about it.
What?
I don't recall.
So you did your own research?
Yeah.
You didn't go to anyone in the department? There's probably, more than likely, there's probably somebody that's still on the force who can probably, who would probably actually work in around that time, but it took you. The only research you did was on your own?
What's your point, Mr. Pippin? I don't understand.
My point is, I don't think, even, even, even that meeting, I don't think you took it serious. That's, that's my point. And, and you, you pretty much kind of proven my point, because you said, I read about it, you, what did you read about that? That you, and, and you're not even precise on what you read, as, as a council, as a councilman, you're not even precise on what you read, you're so cavalier about it.
Are you precise on what you're saying?
I, I'm here to get answers.
Okay, what's, what's the question?
My question is, did you do any due diligence on finding out whether Pete Magarella was in the shooting in 1990 of a seventeen-year-old unarmed teenager? And your response was, I read about it somewhere, uh, um, I, I...
I looked it up and read about it.
You're not a regular person, you're a councilman, you're an elected official.
That's correct.
So if, if a person has a concern, this is a, this is an officer who's around other teenagers. So when I explain to you, when I speak to the young, the young man who was actually shot, and he tells me the story and how vivid and how disgusting it is, the, the young, the person that he shot is my friend, that's how I know about it, he's my friend. And when he tells me the disgusting story about how it took, took place, and this man is not only just a regular guy, but he's around other teenagers, I asked you to do some due diligence, you said I read about it, did any other council members take the initiative to find out and do some research on Pete Magarella, who's head of security in New Brunswick High School, who shot a teenager in 1990, and he was unarmed while he was on the ground?
Accidentally shot a teenager?
No, it wasn't an accident.
Oh, he did it on purpose?
Yes.
Okay. So here's where we're going to disagree, why are you saying he did it on purpose?
Because the person who he shot said he did it on purpose.
Does anybody want to answer that question, Mr. Pippin?
I would simply, I don't think...
Mr. Pippin, your time is up, sir, you have anything else?
No, I'm waiting for an answer.
I don't think anybody has an answer, that's Mr. Pippin.
I already, I mean, concerned with that incident, the reason why I don't speak on it, because Pete Magarella, actually, I know, he was actually one of my coaches at one time, and was around at the same time, and I won't come in either way, because, you know, from what I know, and I have asked people who worked under him, so many incidences, because, you know, I know it was alleged, um, racial incidences, and I went straight to people who work under him right now, and I said, well, is this true, what's going on? And they couldn't bounce, they said, well, it's the same thing, they hadn't heard anything and stuff like that, you know, it's always chatter and stuff like that. But as far as, as far as him as, as far as him as a person, I personally had him as a coach for two and a half, I think two and a half years, and I hadn't experienced that, him with personal interactions with him. As far as outside of that, I can't bounce for that.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Pippin.
And so basically, I'm still waiting for, we, we do this, how about this? All right? Being that it wasn't as serious to you, being that you're stating, you're stating that it was an accident, but you, you don't know for, you don't know for sure if it was an accident, something you read, right?
Correct.
Okay, and, um, I'm stating that he shot a teenager deliberately. Now you just found out that it was an accident, but you knew he was involved with something.
Mr. Pippin, if it wasn't an accident, then I would think he'd be in jail, convicted of something, if he was, if he did it on purpose, he would have been convicted, he would have been in trouble if it was done on purpose, right?
Listen, it was done, that, that doesn't, listen, when you present a case, I'm fully aware of how police get off on crimes, we present a case to the grand jury. Now, this is the thing, I'm trying, I'm trying, because there's a racist, there's a racist, there's a racist culture in New Brunswick Police Department, and you guys try to deny it. The reason he shot that young man is because he was a black teen and he knew he can get away with it. You know why I know that? It's because, listen, you have two police officers who I witnessed, right? Listen to how racist this police department is, and when I say racist, I don't mean, I mean attack on black people. When I, when I say racist, I only identify with my people, when it's attack on black people, right? You had two police officers, one named Jim Marshall, one named Marco Chinchilla, they were selling illegal drugs and prostitution, right? What they did was staged a shooting, they staged a fake shooting, right? Because they knew that the, the city was cracking down, I guess, finding out, because the, one of the people that they had selling drugs, they got arrested for drugs and turned them in, and said, well, listen, I'm telling you who I'm selling for. So what they did was, they staged a shooting, and this isn't something I heard, this is something I seen, right? I seen Jim Marshall in a, in a police vehicle, he pull up on Baldwin Street, facing Lee Avenue, I'll never forget this. I was, I was at, at the time, there was a bar called Somewhere Else in New Brunswick on Rensselaer, I was standing in front of it somewhere else. Jim Marshall pulls up, right, and then Marco Chinchilla pulls to the side of him, facing Troop Avenue. Jim Marshall gets out his vehicle, there were homes, there are townhouses now, but there were homes there, Jim Marshall gets out his vehicle, climbs a fence, Marco Chinchilla goes in behind him and climbs the fence. Now I'm watching these officers, like, what are they doing? I hear shots go off, I step back into the bar, all right? Now, about five, ten minutes later, Jim Marshall hops back over the fence with his shirt unbuttoned and his vest on, Marco Chinchilla hops the fence, shirt unbuttoned, vest on, I still know what's going on. Next thing you know, you hear about, you see about fifty police cars bump up, come through the streets and block the streets off, everybody's knocking, they're knocking on doors and everything. But they did what they said, that someone shot at them, so I guess they could get an early retirement. Now you have a white officer and you have a Mexican officer, but what's most disturbing about that situation is they gave the description of a black man. This is a white officer and a Mexican officer, then, and after, even after finding out that it was a staged shooting, no one in the city apologized to the black community. Why would you give a description of a black man when it was a Mexican officer and a white officer? Why did I give a description of a white person? Why did I give a description of a Mexican person? You said, a black man shot, shot my vest up, and there was not a apology. So for the next three or four days, they rounded every black person they could find that fit that description. Actually, why I come in and do what I do, this is something I witnessed, bear witness. And you have people come in here all the time, right? When I come in and speak, right, what they'll do is, then they used to get behind me, if I say up, they say down, I say right, they say left, then all of a sudden, they get a job at the city, they don't get up anymore. But these are things that I bear witness. So when I tell you that they're racist acts, I'm trying to prevent the narratives of what I went through. Police officers throwing young men in trunks and riding them around the town, then letting them back out. This is what I experienced, experienced, can't, nobody tell me any different. So I know there's a racist culture, I know there's neglect, I know the city don't have